Hey. Okay, thank you very much for your joining on the laws of secret study session. And today we are going to study the fifth chapter creation from face. And this is a quotes from the preface with advancement of psychics. People say there's nothing that cannot be explained in this foreign civilization. But how can that be true? Our lives are full of unknown. I want to awaken more and more to the wonder of living in this world as humans. So this is a message from Mastadi Hokaba. Yeah, how to say? This is, yeah, this is a quote from Mastadi Hokaba on the laws of secret. Yes, so we want to, we will awaken to the wonders of living in this world. Yeah, we tend to know, we tend to think there's nothing we can't, we can't figure out, but actually there are so many things we can't understand. And but before we delve into the laws of secret, and this is a quote from the laws of hope. And yes, I want, I want to read aloud first. I wish for you, I wish for you all to take these words to heart, fulfill, fulfill your mission of light. Please impress them into your heart deeply. Winds in this world and our lives are not always favorable, but if you can't move ahead unless the winds are favorable for you, then you have been too much too frail and dependable. Whether the winds are favorable against you or calm, the feeling inside you says, it doesn't matter, I will still fulfill my mission of light anyway. It's important. So first, please ask yourself, do I feel a burning desire with a sense of mission? Please begin by asking this question. Is the fire of your torch burning? Is the flame of your inner candle alight? Checking yourself this way is important indeed. As long as this fire, this light keeps burning, you can continue walking ahead. As long as this light burns, you cannot help but move forward day by day, whatever day brings you. So master, so sometimes we tend to make an excuse by, oh, this is not my time, or this is the environment is not good and the recession comes and the pandemic occurred. So that's why I can't do much today. And also I don't have much time today and my ability is very low or I can't do it. Things are getting like this. But master said, I wish for you, I wish for you all to take these words to your heart, fulfill your mission of light. And he said, so first, please ask yourself, do I feel a burning desire with a sense of mission? So that is the first question we should ask ourselves. And as long as this fire, this light keeps burning, you can continue walking ahead. So, so you have to ask yourself first, is a fire of our torch burning? And if it's alight, we can move forward because yeah, that is a sense of mission that always push ourselves forward. So today we will ask us two questions. Did you have a mind to expect something from your environment? So for example, do you have a tendency or do you have a part of you in your mind that says, if only I have favorable conditions or if I only have money, time and energy or if I have only, if only I have a rich family or a good university academic backgrounds or any good times to do what I want to do, something like that. So if we have a tendency to say, if only, or I wish these words not constructive. So that is one question. And the second thing is that check your mind whether your inner torch is burning or not. So does your mind says, I will accomplish my mission, whatever comes in my way. Or if you don't, if you don't find the mission yet, you might say, I want to find my mission of my life. Yes, there must be a reason why we are here right now. Why are we are in Philippines? Why we are in this era with Lord El Cantare, Mastadi Hokaba and so on? So we have a purpose, mission and reason to be on this very moment, on this very place, in this very place. So now we are going to ask ourselves two questions. Did you have a mind to express something from your environment and check your mind whether your inner torch is burning or not? Please enter contemplation. Thank you, Lord El Cantare, for preaching the laws of hope. So I want to share my passion and also burning desire. And there are three kinds of reasons I have a burning desire. The first one is that coronavirus. So people are afraid of coronavirus and they will, they have a fear and they have a depression against, and also anxiety about the future. But you know, in happy psychics, we are taught that we have a light within. If we can use this light and also emit this light to emit this light, we can expel coronavirus and also we can protect ourselves and we can protect our families. And we can encourage them and also awaken next people to their spirituality too. So yeah, coronavirus is my burning desire. I mean, how to against that, how to be against the coronavirus is also my passion. And the second one is a lockdown. So Philippine, we have a huge lockdown and we have to be against the totalitarianism of infection. So lockdown is destroying human society. So yeah, we have to protect our society from government. And the third one is that because we, because El Cantare is here. So that's amazing truth that we are, yeah, the creator, what a God of love himself was born on earth to preach the laws of salvation for humanity. So yeah, I think my faith in Lord El Cantare is also a source of my passion too. So yeah, I think there must be, you can come up with new reasons and also no, 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 reasons why you have a mission, you have a passion. So let's have more, let's have as much as we can so that we can keep up our spirits to live for, live for the sake of others. Okay, so now we are going to move on to the study session on the laws of secret. So today we are going to study the creation from faith. So let's read aloud in turn. So today we have Christine, James and Marianne. So okay, let's start with Marianne. So Marianne, could you read this passage?
In the documentary movie Living in the Age of Miracles, there is a scene where one of the main reporters visits a village in Uganda and is welcomed by the residents. He reports on a miracle that happened in Central Africa, a location far away from Japan.
Yes, he's talking about the movie, the documentary movie. Thank you, Marianne. And Christine, could you read aloud this passage?
A little girl who was considered dead from a miracle perspective came back to life when her father continuously recited the truth spoken by Buddha for 45 minutes after she died. This is another version of the rising of Lazarus from death on Christianity.
Yes, yeah, miraculous thing, miracle happened in Uganda. And James, could you read aloud this passage?
Everyone in the village knew that the girl had been dead for 45 minutes, but witnessed their life being restored after the 45 minutes recitation of the English sutra that true words spoken by Buddha. One seeing these many believers became happy science members. Such a story was introduced in the movie.
Thank you, James. Yeah, this is important parts. So I will read aloud next. I think their face is pure and straightforward. Even in this day and age, there is someone who came back to life simply because the father recited the truth was spoken by Buddha for 45 minutes. Marianne, could you read it aloud?
In Christianity, other than the resurrection of Jesus himself after the crucifixion, the story of the rising of Lazarus is the only miracle that involves resurrecting the dead. So this is one of the greatest miracles. So this one, so this is one of the greatest miracles. The same kind of resurrection happened when a happy science believer in Africa, who is not even a staff member, recited the true words spoken by Buddha.
Yes, oh, thank you, thank you, Marianne. And Christine, yes, could you read this sentence?
It was because he strongly prayed, felt a sorrow, very exciting it. When he recited the prayer with a strong belief that miracles would happen, the heart of this child began to deep again and she back to life. She now goes to school and lives a normal life. So what is considered impossible has actually occurred.
Thank you. And James, could I ask you to read aloud?
Yet this is merely the beginning when faith truly prevails all over the world. Even greater miracles will happen. Even Jesus Christ of Christianity, which is said to have two billion believers in the world, is just another hiding spirit of happy science. When you discover this, you will understand how great is the hidden power that happy science has a religion.
Yes, thank you, James. Yeah, this is the most important parts. Yes, so are you, how to say? Does it, did it blow, blow awake your mind? Yeah, actually it blew away for my mind. Because yeah, it is the dead resurrected again by, not by Jesus, not by El Cantare himself. It is, it is the miracle happened by a member of happy psychics through the citation that truth was spoken by Buddha. This is amazing. Yeah, I like, yeah, I should believe, but yeah, it was so eye opening and also yeah. Yeah, if I stuck, if I stuck to common knowledge, I will have a doubt. But it's just a fact. So, so master introduced in a lecture, Living in the Age of Miracles, which is a documentary movie. And today, tonight we are going to watch it. So if you are available, let's watch it together. So yeah, anyway, so in that film, we can see the miracle happen to Mastadi, no, no, happen to a member in Uganda. And he said, oh, this is a Volanpala version of raising Lazarus from death on Christianity, on Christianity. So everybody knows the girl has already, had been already dead. But he, she resurrected again. So master said, even in this day and age, there is someone who came back to life simply because the father has decided to reverse focus by Buddha for 45 minutes. So miracle happened in the age of Jesus, but also in this era, in this very era where we are living, miracle can happen. So yeah, and he said, this was because he strongly prayed to El Cantare. And what is considered impossible has actually occurred. So and this is a quote from the preface. And this book shall give you a new view of the world and a new guiding principles to live by. When the laws of secret becomes a common knowledge to you, this world will be more beautiful and be filled with delight. And you will surely be thankful for a mystical truth that God's love has been letting you live. So this book actually enlightening us to have a new guiding, new perspective of life. So even the dead can arise again with a power of faith. So now we are going to do a 10 minute contemplation about, do you believe that there is nothing impossible but a power of faith in Lord God, El Cantare? And what should we do as a disciple of El Cantare to save all humanity? So people are suffering and also some of them are dying due to coronavirus. Maybe it will happen to our people around us too. But we can save them by the citation of the Dharma that truth was spoken by Buddha and also other players of happy science too. So and the master said, this book also reveals reveals the mystical power of God and miraculous power of faith. So through this, through reading this, the laws of secret, we can deepen the understanding and also the conviction in faith in Lord El Cantare. So now we are going to ask ourselves two questions. Please enter contemplation. Thank you, Lord El Cantare, our guiding spirits and the guiding spirits of happy science for giving us the advice. So I want to introduce some of the passages from Creation from Face. And master said, from now on, And master said, uh from now on, we will see, hear, and feel more unexpected things. Than we are, than we ever imagined, and while we are alive in this world. Many things that we believe impossible in this world will begin to happen. The majority of people have been brainwashed by moral irritation, mass media, our opinions of their neighbors. Uh and are living without knowing as their real power or the real power of God. What, and Buddha in the heavenly world. So from now on, I, Master Yoh Kaba, intend to show you the true world. Hmm, this is spiritually powerful passage uh from the laws of creation and laws of secret. So we are brainwashed by the irritation, common knowledge, and also mass, mass medias. So it's important to get rid of the wrong views from them. And establish our faith, our faith should come first. Uh we just believe what, uh what he has taught, uh what he has preached. And yes, so there is, we don't need any proof. Uh, in, in order to believe him, we just believe in Lord God, El Cantare. So let's uh say, let's uh convey this miraculous uh story to people around us. So they can also have a faith in Lord God, El Cantare. And this is a. Yes, so this, uh this is a quote from preface again. So this book shall give you a new view of the world and new guiding principles to live by. And you will surely be thankful for a mystical truth that God's love has been letting you live. Yes, we are, uh we tend to think we are living, but actually we are allowed to live in this very world. So yeah, this world is filled with miracle and a mystical power of God. And also filled with uh God's love to let us live in this world. So let us be thankful, let, let us be thankful of uh being given everything from Lord God, El Cantare. So yes, uh so we, we already learned the preface afterward, and also secret. Uh first, from first to fifth uh chapter from the laws of secret. And tomorrow too, uh we are going to study more about the first chapter, the secret world of religion. Yes, uh thank you very much for joining, and I will stop the recording uh right now.